I had the pleasure of attending a trauma smart workshop in Abbott Workshop. And had an informal listen and learn with some recent Raytown alumni. And then I am currently just to kind of better myself as a board member, school leader. For this district, taking a refresher course on implicit bias and how that impacts us in our schools. So that's all for me.
Good evening. This week I will be taking the board. Training down in. Sedalia, in Sedalia, Missouri. So, and have been a part of quite a few board trainings lately. So, and it is very informative. And I'm learning a lot.
I'm currently doing a. Conflict resolutions course at Sisters of Christ for kids and. We also started a drone flying class over at the the homey center for some guys right now students. If you guys want to come out and see we do it every Thursdays at five o'clock. And Mondays at one o'clock, I mean at five o'clock also two to five. You guys want to come out and see and we also doing a. Changing the path for young guys to change their influence in classrooms, their teachers. If you guys want to be a part of that, then I'll teach in that class for those guys to change the the path on how they treat teachers and. What they what they just want to see the schools look like. So if you guys want to be a party that you come over to a right town church Baptist church on sixty one oh one. Blue Ridge and I'll be able to teach in that classroom. That's currently what I'm doing.
All right. Remember if I made this report last month, but we had our board retreat back in June. And it was just for us to as a board to come together. To help build consensus and and discuss. Different topics and and concerns that's going on in the district and. We had reports from each department which went very well. We just talked about just how to conduct ourselves as board members and how to best serve our community. That elected us. And I think it was a very productive time. And did a lot to to unite us as as one as one team. Also. I had the opportunity to go to the. The summer MSBA conference. I've attended several. Seminars or workshops, whatever they call them. I did a board board president workshop, which was quite informative on how to conduct the meetings and. Some of the things that I've been falling short in that I definitely plan to rectify. And one of the things I I made a commitment from. That from that conference to. To to get more involved and active in MSBA and representing our district. And so I'll be. Trying to get some of those certificates. That some of the other board members to represent us. Across the state and taking more of a leadership position because we have a we're quite a unique district. We did receive an award there. I forgot to bring it tonight. So, but we can take one of the many awards and take a picture with that one. I guess not. So, but anyway, we look looking forward to. Our conference in the fall. I hope that. Board members all can can participate in that as well because it was quite informative and it you got to meet just. Lot of other board members across the state. And share ideas and talk about different things that's going on in the districts and. It's just was was pretty good. So that's my report.
Good evening Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Watkins, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the community. As you see on the report for the superintendent items eight point two is the student code of conduct and as many of you may recognize. We are moving away from utilizing the language of student discipline. We began the work this year with a small focus group that's inclusive of our school administrators. District leaders and school support staff, teachers included. To begin to talk about our student code of conduct. When we look at the term of discipline, discipline means to correct the behavior. And there are some practices that we engage in that are not changing the behaviors. And so the work that we're doing around our student code of conduct will lead us as a district to be able to do that. So we're creating more inclusive environments that are safe and orderly. But also are supporting our children when they come to school and need that additional support. During the time with the focus group, we began to work with re utilizing a resource of a text called disciplining with dignity. And really digging down into the text to examine our own practices. We also looked at several incidences around the nation. Just to see how we can be proactive and avoid having those incidents occur here. And it all begins with providing our students with support, our parents with support and bridging that gap between school and home. We do know that student behaviors are corrected and adjusted. When there is a partnership and collaboration between school and parent and student. And that's the direction that we're going in. That work will continue for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. And it's with hope that we have a student conduct. Set of principles that will allow us to lead the work so that all of our children are learning in the best capacity for them. So that again, we are all inclusive, but we're also doing so in an environment that's safe and orderly for all of our children. Eight point three summer school update. I see we have Dr. Lynn Tarvin here who's going to provide us with an update. Hello, Dr. Tarvin.
Good evening, Mr. Burton, Mr. Watson, the board members and Dr. Martin Knox. We finished up a great summer school on the twenty ninth. We had a total of three thousand three hundred and forty eight students who attended summer school this year. That was up sixty nine students from the last year. And our total hours of attendance increased by almost seven thousand seven hundred. In the document, you see the number of first time credit courses that students passed. Credit recovery classes in a regular classroom and credit recovery on Google Classroom. As I mentioned last month, the Google Classroom focus has was a new initiative for us this year and we were able to get. Many more students who almost passed the first time to get that credit. And they didn't have to stay the whole time in summer school. So they they did the work they need to. They showed the mastery of the content. And then they were free to go. As you asked, we did send out a survey to parents and students as well as staff. And there's a summary of those items listed. We had a hundred and eighty one parents respond, five hundred and sixty students. Grades three and up and a hundred and eighty seven staff. Eighty two percent of parents said that they would send students to summer school, summer enrichment camp in the future. The number one response that we got from both parents and students of their favorite thing of summer enrichment camp was field trips. We did add field trips for as an incentive for students who had strong behavior and attendance from middle school this year. That's not something we've done before and it was well received. And we also added some more. Assemblies where we had community organizations come to our school sites in addition to field trips for each grade level in the elementaries. The STEM activities seem to be well appreciated throughout the month. Lots and lots of pictures of kids doing hands on learning, which was great. Some of the surveys. Felt like we had too much of a shift to stem and we didn't do art this year because we focused so much on STEM. So we will be looking at how we can balance and try to fit both in that summer school day. So that is my update. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, can you share some of the other feedback? I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, I had it on. All right. Hey, Mr. President. All right, would you mind sharing some of the other feedback that you received? I know you said some of their top responses were the field trips.
So some of the students responded that they enjoyed the STEM activities. A lot of the students said they they just liked being there with their friends. A lot of the parents said they like knowing that their kids have a safe place to be during the month of June. Their kids get two meals a day that they wouldn't get if they're at home. So a lot of the things are just stability for those families that we can provide for one more month. Outside of that, there were several other items that were just one offs that didn't repeat a lot. But really the main thing that I saw over and over and over was the field trips. The kids want to get out of the school and have learning opportunities. I mentioned that we did more field trips with middle school this year. We also did a field trip for first grade this year that we haven't done in the past. So. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you any other items. Stability and just fun learning experiences, really.
Mr. President. I had a two part question for you. What STEM did you did and what ages did it go?
So the STEM projects focused a lot around. Geology topics. So there were things about erosion. There were also things about. Anatomy. So we had one project where the kids dissected a chicken wing. And they were looking at how moving the muscles around affected the joint and that was connected to prosthetics. There was another project about bridge building. Another project on building boats. So kids had all kinds of different projects. Where they were learning things that could be put into action in real world settings and they were age appropriate. I'm sorry, it was kindergarten through eighth grade.
Mr. President. How do you dis disperse a service to students? Five hundred and sixty students responding seems like a great number.
So it went out through the classroom teachers during the last two or three days of school. And like I said, we focused. Yes, it was a Google survey, a Google form survey.
That's a good number for turning.
Sorry, did we use the summer school program to let the students know the importance of filling out the lunch permission slips?
That is not something that I remember us focusing on. Because enrollment. Doesn't start until Wednesday. I think that we sent out information about enrollment during the last week of summer school. But that is not something that we focus on in summer school. All meals during summer school are free. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tarvin. And may I add, I had the fortunate pleasure of visiting our summer enrichment camps. And there were a lot of firsts this year. First, this was the first year we called it a summer enrichment. As opposed to summer school because I believe it has a negative connotation. And this is just another opportunity for students to extend their learning. The other piece was the first time we've adjusted the curriculum that was being implemented the first time. And how many years was it, Dr. Tarvin? About ten to fifteen years the first time. And I personally, the teacher in me. Wanted to be in the buildings just to see the work that was taking place. And I too received a lot of the comments that Dr. Tarvin referenced. But I think the most enlightening one was from the secondary students when I asked them what did they enjoy the most? And they said the independence of being able to work. As an individual and work at their own pace. I went into some of the classrooms and I mean, I was just amazed at the engagement that was taking place from elementary to middle to high. So I just kudos to Dr. Tarvin, to our summer school staff or summer enrichment staff. They did a really good job. And I also had an opportunity to talk to teachers who were delivering the new curriculum and we got some feedback. And so I think it's important for us to elicit that feedback so we can make adjustments so we can continue to improve our practice. And who better to give it to us than our amazing teachers and our amazing students? So thank you for the the feedback regarding the survey. And for the work that took place during the summer.
All right. Oh, yes.
The next item is nine point one, which is a ray of hope. We have a video which actually transitions from the conversation we just engaged in regarding our summer enrichment. So our ray of hope video for this evening is focused on our summer enrichment.
My favorite part of summer school is our field day and going outside to recess. Hi, my name is Jordan and my favorite part of summer school is. We went to on a field trip to Bess Town and we like I had a job where like I was I was a CFO of City Hall. And I went around to other com companies and told them they need to pay the rent.
Summer enrichment camp is probably speech because. Although Miss Garland, she's really nice and. She always does do a lot of activities like watch people play Japanese today.
My favorite part is recess. My favorite part of recess is kickball and football and I get all the outs.
My favorite part of summer school has been being able to take classes during the summer that I wouldn't be able to take during the school year.
My favorite part is math. And I like addition and subtraction.
My favorite part of summer school is that we get to build bird feeders because because. We get to do it with our groups.
My favorite part of the bird feeder was building. It's kind of difficult, but it's not that hard. All you have to do is put the the cap on or the top and then I need to like put the food inside. I already have those spaces to put when the bird comes in. But I don't really know how it's supposed to get the food because I stick it to the ceiling. If it was on the on the bottom, it was probably gonna slip out to the grounds. And maybe other animals or bugs might try to eat it.
My favorite part of summer school is peeing basically to pee. I love. I love basically every single creature here. My favorite part about all my classes is that we need to learn about new stuff every day, every time we come. And basically my my favorite thing about this is the football camp we had like last week. Football camp, it was fun.
My favorite part was the was the. Field trip at the Beanstalk.
My favorite part of summer school is being able to hang out with friends during the summer.
My favorite part about summer school is to hang out with all my friends from different schools.
My favorite thing about summer enrichment camp is probably being able to see my friends and I relax.
How do you feel about summer school?
And so there you have it from the mouths of babes. If you ever want to know the truth, just ask, they'll tell you. Sometimes they don't, you you don't want to hear what they have to say, but it's important that we hear them because they're our number one customers. So thank you to our communications department for putting that video together and capturing the voices of our amazing children. The next item, Mr. Burton, you spoke about it just a little bit is item nine point two. As you can see, because we don't have the plaque here this evening, but there's a. Picture with the plaque and our amazing board chair. So our board is among seventeen Missouri school boards that earned the Missouri School Boards Association's twenty twenty three Governance Team Award. This prestigious award is based on the outstanding commitment of the school board and superintendent to ongoing professional development and effective governance practices. The award recognizes their commitment to regional and statewide leadership. And to active participation and legislative advocacy for public schools and the students they serve. And there are some other indicators that went along with the receipt of this award. The school board in our district is because one, our district is fully accredited. All seven school board members completed the essential new board member certification from MSBA. All seven board members fulfilled the refresher training requirement. At least two board members attained the advanced level of certification from MSBA. At least one board member attained the master level of certification. At least a quorum of the board and the superintendent attended the twenty twenty two MSBA annual conference. A representative attended the twenty twenty three MSBA advocacy day. And a board member represented representative participated in MSBA's delegate assembly. And I can say that our school board not only deserves this recognition and award, but they deserve many more. For their voices and their advocacy for our children and for our staff. So can you join me, please, in giving our board a round of applause? Good job. Good job. Oh, it's gone.
I was successfully hitting my belly.
Not not tonight. And nine point three, Dr. Calcara, are you taking care of nine point three or shall I? Glad you can work tonight.
Good evening, Mr. President, Vice Chair, members of the board. Dr. Martin Knox, I am working tonight. Welcome guests, community guests, and we we've got some. Leaders, building and department leaders that I want to introduce to the board tonight. You know, nineteen new building or department leaders at this point across across the district. You know, and being in this in this role for a year, so much that comes across my plate. You know, has to do and start with leadership. And so we hold high hopes for our new leaders. We know that they will they will hit the ground running. If I wasn't involved in their interviews, I was closely informed and so I can tell you. We are we are lucky to have this group of leaders with us. And we know they're going to be great additions to the RQS family and we look forward to them, you know. Doing the work on behalf of of students, staff and families, you know, very, very quickly. And so I do, not all of them could be here with us tonight, but. So my plan is for me to read a quick little bio about the the ones that are here. And then I would like for you, don't leave yet, but I would like to get a picture. So. This is Matt Verlinden. He's our new Director of Technology. Matt started with us in June of two thousand and five, served as Assistant Director from May of two thousand and ten. To June of twenty twenty three and again will join us as the new Director of Technology next school year. Next is Ms. Jessica Bassett. She is our new Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Leadership for Secondary Schools. Ms. Bassett has been twenty two years in education, eleven of those years as a principal. Most recently as Lawrence High School Principal in Lawrence, Kansas. And again, she joins us as our new Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Leadership for Secondary Schools. You can hold your applause until the end of this, Mr. Burton, and we would appreciate it. This is Dr. Michelle Blakely. She's worked in education since two thousand and one, started as a teacher, worked as assistant principal at RSA from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty two. Most recently served as Assistant Director of Administration for Student Services. And will join us as in the HR department as the Assistant Director of Human Resources. Very excited about Dr. Blakely. Mr. Tyler Britt, Tyler's been a was a teacher for five years and worked for as various coordinator positions in the district. Most recently, the principal of Laurel Hills Elementary for the past two years. And will return back to ARSEC as Director of Curriculum and Instruction with us for the next school year. Next is Dr. Andrew McCarthy. He began as a teacher in two thousand and six and he's been in administration since two thousand and thirteen. Most recently Assistant Principal Hickman Mills Hickman High School, excuse me, in Columbia School District. And he will be the new principal of Raytown High School. Next is Ms. Thule. She joined the RQS family in July of two thousand and eleven as a kindergarten teacher, worked as a sped teacher and coordinator. Served as Westridge Admin Intern from in the two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty three school year. And will join us as the new principal of West Westridge Elementary next school year. Dr. Bean began teaching in two thousand and thirteen, most recently has been the Academic Success Coordinator. For the Center School District and will join us as the new principal for Laurel Hills Elementary. And Ms. Anastasia Lineback, she began teaching in two thousand and twelve, moved to an AP role in two thousand and seventeen. Moved to Brookside Charter as Director Student Success Center in two thousand and nineteen. Most recently has been Dean of Students at Washington High School. And I think. Finally, last but not least, Ms. Lori Bullware began as a cook in two thousand and five, promoted to manager. In two thousand and eight, has served as catering and warehouse manager since two thousand and fourteen. And will join us as the lead cafeteria manager for the next school year. I think that's all then we have with her. So please, at this point. Welcome them and if and if I could because we.
Congratulations to you all.
And yes, let's get one with Dr. Martin Knox. I was joking.
And let me just say before you all depart, I want to publicly thank you for joining the team. You have the most important job there is, and that's to provide continuous education to our children. And so I thank you for all of the roles that you've signed up for. Remember you signed up for it. No, but understand we're here to support you. I know that the interview process was rigorous, but I just want to thank you for your investment in Raytown Quality Schools and thank you for your commitment. I also want to take a moment just to say, you know, Matt Verlinden jumped in with both feet and both elbows. Just to make sure that we can continue to operate effectively with our technology. Oftentimes you see it on the screen. And you just think it miraculously shows up, but it does not. So Matt, I want to publicly thank you as well as Kevin. And and Kevin, thank you for your hard work and your your efforts as well. And so thank you all for joining the best team around. I don't care what anybody else says. You're here, Raytown. Let's go.
Hey, where y'all going? We got some food now. All right, thank you. We have no public comments tonight, so we'll move forward to our next item on the agenda. During the Board Committee Reports. Seeing none, we'll move forward to our next item on the agenda. Move, we got a motion. We have a motion. Oh, you did like this? Okay. I'm sorry, we do have a request.
So one of the things we did on our board retreat was talk about having monthly committee reports. So with the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee, we have curriculum revision work that's being completed at the elementary level, fourth grade math for first, second and fifth, with our counseling department, high school English at English two, three and four, middle school and high school algebra one, high school algebra two, high school geometry and high school Spanish. And we completed and submitted a report for the Kaufman Real World Learning regarding our data and have had a technology audit review, K through twelve tech. We have virtual coursework vendor. We completed that review. And there's been planning for a district leadership retreat for July eighteenth through the twentieth. And also plans for Solution Tree Professional Learning Committees, Communities with it being district hosted in a conference format, July twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. Ongoing work with our summer school plans for graduation coming up on July twentieth. And then for our strategic planning projects, which will be updated, there'll be an update in August.
Thank you. Other report?
The committee, the meeting was called to order. The committee approved the March twelfth, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three PRC meeting minutes. New business, the committee will, sorry about that, guys, my glasses, though. Will, will inquire MSBA to see if they have any recommendations of policy. ECG animals on district property. The committee reviewed updates from Dr. Martin Knox of the Discipline Committee and its relation to policy. JG student discipline, JGR dash R1 student discipline. JGB detention and or in-school suspension of students. And JGD student suspension and expulsion. Dr. Martin Knox will update the board at the July Board Meeting of the 2023, 2024 Student Code of Conduct. The board reviewed policy BBC, Board Member Resignation and determined no further action needed. The meeting was adjourned.
Thank you. Any others?
Mr. President. I'm going to the board approve it. April tenth, twenty twenty-three Finance Committee Meeting Minutes and June twelfth, twenty twenty-three Policy Review Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion made and seconded. Next, we'll have our committee assignments. I will update this. Yeah, we did put it. We'll have a committee assignments, make sure that we have it updated with the, the members on the committee. We did decide who would chair the committees. And we decided to add a Community Engagement Committee that, who was the chair of that? Mr. Newton would be the chair of that. And I'll give out the next committee assignment for each member of each committee. We're going to go with two board members per committee. And we'll have to vote on the community engagement. We'll have to approve that committee. What I'm looking for as far as the chairs to, to make the time period in the goals. Time period being a year, but it goes for the committee for the year. And then we'll get the administrative staff appointments to those committees as well. And set a schedule, chairman to set the schedule, how often the committees will meet. So plan to have that completed by next board meeting. They'll be getting an email from me on that. Take a motion.
Mr. President, who is the board education approved policies, IGAB-dash instructional interventions, IGC, instructional programs, IKEE promotion acceleration and retention of students, IL-dash assessment program and IND ceremonies and observances.
Motion made and seconded. There any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'm going to approve renewal contract with Aquatic Academy in the amount of two hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just.
Presentation?
Just, Mr. President, just one easy question. How is that amount related to our previous contract amount?
Good evening, everyone. I was actually prepared for that question. So I went ahead and I looked at our year of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And we had spent two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and three, twenty-two, twenty-three. That price tag came to two hundred and seventy-five thousand, three forty-seven. So this current year would actually represent a decrease from the prior year. I do believe we were able to get a little bit more training with the existing staff at the Wellness Center. So they will do a little bit more of the work that was contained in that scope of work that will help to reduce the price.
Do they also base it on how many students are actually in the program?
No, I think it's based on just the scheduling.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further discussion or vote? Amplify, Amplify, Amplify Renewal. Man.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Dr. Brenner.
Good evening, Board. President Burton, Vice President Watson, Dr. Martin Knox. We are bringing a seventh grade DLA curriculum to the board for approval. Amplify is our current vendor. We've partnered with K six. And so we've spent time piloting resources in seventh grade with Amplify this year. And our middle school teachers are very excited to continue to utilize Amplify in seventh grade.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brenner. Yes, vote. Motion passes. Stay in motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Dr. Brenner.
So our high school mathematics team considered resources for high school, middle school, high school algebra. High school geometry and high school algebra two. So this amount represents resources for all three of those high school math courses. And it's been some time since we've renewed materials for high school math. So again, our, our teachers were very excited to have, or will be very excited to have these new resources to, to meet the needs of our, our math students in high school and middle school.
I'm sure you, you do this, but when you speak with the, the high school math teachers, are you able to offer them resources like this or they suggest those resources? You kind of speak to how you come to this conclusion.
Yeah, so our, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and, and a coordinator will bring a team together that represents teachers that teach those courses. So this is, if it's high school math or it's middle school science, it's a similar process. So we bring in those that teach the courses to talk about what are the, the needs that they have as a teacher. We also have conversations with, with students as well, gather their feedback. But we do take a lot of emphasis on what our teachers are telling us that they need. And so that team comes together and they develop a request for a quote based on the things that they feel like they needed a new resource. They spend some time researching, but they, we put that, that quote out on the street for bid. And then we have vendors come and interview with those, those teams to talk about the resources that they have, the value that they, the support that they can provide for teachers. And so after that process, that, that committee of stakeholders, of teachers makes a recommendation based on the merits of the vendors that we've interviewed.
Thank you for that. Follow-up questions, President? With the the opportunities that the, the teachers have, and then from a financial perspective of paying for this. Do we, are we allowed to eat grant monies for these type of things? Do we, do we research those things when it comes to paying for these much-needed additions to, you know, our curriculum?
No, typically curriculum resources and materials come out of the district budget. I'm not aware that, that we necessarily would qualify for, for grants. We certainly work with our vendors to negotiate the best price possible. It is a very competitive environment. But typically, when the district purchases resources like this for curriculum, it comes from district funds.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Dr. Brenner. Let's vote.
Mr. President, who did board of education approved HMH for the twenty-three, twenty-four high school American government vendor in the amount of seventy-two thousand, hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion for this? Let's vote. Motion passes. Motion.
Mr. President, who did board of education approved HMH for the twenty-three, twenty-four high school American history vendor in the amount of eighty-two thousand, hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Stand and vote. Motion passes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
I see you have, Mr. Britt, welcome to your new role. In your experience as a, as a building principal and working with the online, with the, with the virtual vendor selection, can you tell us why?
We gotta bring him up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe just put you on the spot.
Man, you should have left.
I know, right? Should have left out. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
No, I'm just playing.
A little bit about your experience with the online vendor and, and why you chose to be in new role to go with this particular vendor.
Sure. So in full transparency, I came in kind of at the halfway point of this decision-making process. Where we narrowed it down to the two vendors that are on the bid sheet that you see. So schools, PLP, SLP, PLP, I think it was. And then Edge Annuity was the other option. And really what we're looking at in this program, the primary purpose for, for exploring a new vendor was for credit recovery. So we're really looking at secondary schools, something that wouldn't, and my previous world is elementary, wouldn't really affect me. So what we're looking at is something that students can basically replace the program that we've been using when they're looking at credit recovery options. And when you go down the list comparing them side by side, Edge Annuity, we feel like gives us a lot more flexibility in the content that we can deliver to students. And it's just more of a comprehensive program. So I think ultimately, from my limited experience coming in, you know, just now, that was sort of the decision-making factor. When we talked to the teachers that are cubed and some of the credit recovery teachers of both of the high schools. This was the one that seemed to went out that they thought gave them more flexibility, both in the assigning of content and the grading of content for themselves and for their students. And so that's kind of what the driving decision was. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good job.
Thank you. A pass.
All right. Dr. Douglas.
Mr. President, I wanted to ask, is this, do you have a, a lot of staff or a, a team of staff who kind of monitor the, the progress of the students who are on this virtual learning program?
We do. So anyone that's taking, that's using this is, is monitored by an RQS staff member. And typically, that staff member is actually monitoring them so granularly that they are actually assigning the content to them. And they're doing the grading and, and making sure that students are actually doing what we need them to do. One of the reasons that we chose Edge Annuity was the way that it tracks that assigned content. The teachers who are the ones delivering that instruction really liked the way that it should. It actually has a little tracker on there that tells students you are on pace or you are not on pace and you need to pick it up. And it was very clear for the teacher and the student to see that, to make that conversation even more real time than it's been in the past with the previous vendor.
Thank you.
Or Mr. President. So just a really quick, I'm familiar with Edge Annuity and I know with different versions.
So just to really, I'm familiar with Edge Annuity and I know with different versions. And I was, as I was looking through the bid sheet and all, can you speak more to the plagiarism tracker and some of those protocols? Cause I know just in my experience in the past, students have been able to have various workarounds with Edge Annuity, even with a dedicated staff member there. So I'm curious about that.
So I'll be honest, I don't have a tremendous amount of background with that yet. I do know that that was something that we, that was an add-on that we wanted and that the teachers wanted was that plagiarism tracker. Yeah, it, it's a big deal. There's so many options out there now for students to be sneaky. And so we want them to do the learning. They have to do the work and, and do the learning. So I don't have specifics on that. Be happy to get more information on that and report back to you.
And I, I'm going to be very interested in that because that, that would be my only, something that's kind of niggling in my brain.
Yeah, it's regardless of the vendor, that certainly is a challenge at any virtual company provides or has is, is that, you know, AI, chat, GPT, all of the, all of the tools that are at students' disposal. Now it's a challenge.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Griner. I would like to inform everybody that we're now not going to break a record because of Mike. Well, you, you went on and did it too. Just wanted, I just want you to know.
It's not me. All right. Mr. President, I moved that the board approve the July tenth, two thousand twenty-three consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We started at six fifty-eight, Rick.
Mr. Pre, Mr. President, I moved that the board adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at seven forty-nine PM.